To discuss the work session to discuss a resolution to adopt the comprehensive transportation plan update, and I'm going to pass along to Courtney Tanner, Planner, at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Just kind of a quick update as to where we are in this process. Last time we met, the work session, we covered portions of Chapter 4. I'm recommending that we go ahead and table our Park 4.2 to our Park section, and then we'll continue the discussion on the remaining items associated with Chapter 4. And then, at the December 11th meeting, we'll pick up with Chapter 5. If this evening, I think if time allows, I should be able to cover Appendix A and B as well, in addition to the leftover items from Chapter 4. As we start proceeding, I may start jumping through different sections of the appendices just based off time. It really honestly doesn't matter what order those are presented, but what really matters is when we meet back on the 11th for Chapter 5. On the break, each of you will be placed at the dais, kind of a study guide, if you will, that will help you walk through. You can take notes and just bring that back with you at the next meeting. So moving on, kind of to where we are, I quickly covered on what we'll do on the 11th. We'll clean up in January, and if necessary, we'll continue discussion in February, with potential adoption in February, March. I believe that's where we will be at this point. We've gone ahead and included an update of all the chapters and appendices to date, the direction that we've been provided, and then I'm just going to go ahead and start on the Chapter 4 slide. So the first item that we have listed, we completed at the last work section. The second item, we're parking, but item number three is to evaluate adding green infrastructure. This was brought forward by the mayor, I believe, at the October 9th work session, and so I just wanted to see if there's any particular green initiatives that council would like added to this section.
Do we need the, add the greenway connection from Melissant to the new school, U-50?
That was previously covered, I believe, at, I want to say it was one of the October sessions. So we have direction on that one already, and that will be added, and it's highlighted and identified in Attachment 9 of your packet.
Okay. I didn't notice it in the packet, because I know later on tonight, when we do the special one for it to be included, it wasn't on that. It wasn't pictured on that one, deplited. Check on that later on tonight when it comes to us at the regular meeting.
We can circle back, yes, if need be.
So, nothing further particular on the green infrastructure at this time?
No. I believe it was just kind of a broad statement, and I didn't know if any council members had any specific green initiatives they wanted to potentially intertwine into the Chapter 4?
Members Link?
I'm sorry. The only thing, maybe it's, at some point, I don't know, I brought it, for the Providence place in Kits Creek, I know there aren't many parks or greenways out there, but is there any way that we could put some language in there saying we're looking at it, or how could we do that?
So parks would not be appropriate to add in this. Parks would be more appropriate, the parks and Recreation Master Plan. However, if you do have identified greenways that are missing that you would like to see added, if you look, and on the break, I will provide everybody some homework, if you will, some guidance to help with your homework for Chapter 5, and we will be covering the table that outlines all the proposed greenways. Take a look at that, and if you have an identified section, mark up a map and bring that back with you. If you want to even provide it in advance of the meeting, so I can provide everybody a copy, we can do that as well, and we can discuss at that time. So I'm going to park it to the 11th work session, if you don't mind. I'll make a note of that.
Councilmember Garamella?
Courtney, will that include, when you say green infrastructure, is it like walkways, you know, like the paths? Like, the place I'm thinking is the Macarman New Extension that's opening up, Phase 2. We said in theory, yes, we will be adding, you know, multi-path use there. So do we have that as part of this plan to incorporate? Or the other place I was thinking was the Walmart in Charlotte Glen where some connectivity through a greenway could be done?
Specifically, green infrastructure, and it covers a host. I mean, it can include mean green buildings, which is not necessarily appropriate here. My initial reaction for this is, is there an appropriate thing to maybe establish cross-sections, so if somebody wants permeable paver, you know, sidewalks? Is there a preset design that we have in place that we know would work with our soils? Or is it simply a recommendation that we provide one and include it into the Engineering, Design, and Construction Manual, because that's where most cross-sections are located? That is an option as well. And it's a potential policy, or program recommendation, that can be included into our near, mid, and long-term objectives in Chapter 5. And that's probably one of the most appropriate, but there's others out there.
So is this, like, adding some of the missing sidewalks, or even like the greenways? That's what?
No, green is really referring to sustainability, and that umbrella is what that is referring to.
Lake Rowley has upgraded some of their sidewalk areas to, like, instead of parking spaces, like a little rain garden, for example, things like that, or the permeable pavers that Ms. Tanner is talking about. That's kind of the sort of broad green infrastructure. I'd love to see us sort of go in that direction, but without any specifics right now, just sort of general language supporting it. Would Mayor Protem Scroggins-Johnson like to add anything to that portion of the discussion?
That is my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the next slide. Really, 4 talked about local bus routes, and we captured that in our conversation at our last session, when we talked about creating the appendices as part of the transportation, excuse me, the public transportation process, that we're going to have a more robust process moving forward in coming back and visiting it. So we really captured it already as part of that. So I went ahead and just struck that as an item. So it leaves us with number 5, which is to determine if additional smart technology options are needed in addition to what is currently provided in Appendix G. And this was provided at the October 9th work session, and I believe it was Councilmember Rao that mentioned this item. Is there anything in particular any council member would like to add?
Given the presentation that we received recently about smart technology on traffic signaling, I think it'd be nice to at least have some language saying that we're amenable to looking at that in the future, not that it's required or we're doing it right now. Is that something that we could maybe include?
To make sure that I understand completely what by traffic signalization, are you going with the synchronization of the signaling, or are you referring to something different?
I think that's already been touched on by others, but I'm talking more about communication with vehicles, smart grid technology, like, so helping the cars talk to each other and talk to signals, and communication in that way. As an innovative thing, we'd love to be seen as a city that, if not does it, that is amenable to it. That's okay with the council. Councilmember Rao?
Courtney, my reference to smart technology, the reason I used, I like the word options, because options for me means, I know that we're in the process of, you know, having a CIO that's going to focus more on the, sort of, the innovation, like, the technology strategy, but it would be like, you know, public-private, you know, partnerships, you know, companies coming in and saying they've got sensor technology they could implement so that we could get real-time visibility. Not that we don't have visibility, we get transportation data, but, you know, different things like that, just with smart technology options. So I think for the public to understand when we say smart technology, we mean being able to see the data in real time.
So if I'm understanding kind of both of you, as things evolve, as things are innovative, we just want to make sure the message is clear that we're open to listening and implementing where possible. And if that kind of captures everything, you know, we can talk about, you know, signal communication with, you know, vehicles, or new unknown options of transportation that may be, but we're always open to listening and evaluating and making the appropriate changes. I mean, that certainly can be captured in this chapter as something that's important to the town. Is that something we're all agreeable in capturing?
Seeing head nods on that, yes. Thank you. Councilmember Shlink?
I just had a question. Should we mention something about the Wake County plan with the commuter, whatever we're calling it, light rail or commuter rail?
Well, we've referenced the Wake County plan in the actual document itself, and we are using the plan as one of the documents as we move forward with kind of the next wave of public transit that Ben is working on. So we have captured it in those two specific areas. There's also some points in here, so kind of community funding as well. Is there additional information specifically you are looking for outside of what we are already tackling?
I think that's fine until we get your checks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to...
Just a second. Anything in addition, Mayor Protem, on that item, technology, et cetera? Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Moving on to Appendix A. And I'm going to turn it over to Ben to provide an overview.
So Appendix A in the draft plan, as you'll see, is our glossary, includes a list of acronyms and defines not only the acronyms, but also frequently-used terms. The only change from the glossary that was provided in the 2009 plan is that this one was updated to only include transportation-related terms and acronyms.
We didn't have any comments from any of the previous work sessions, already phone conversations, so if anybody has any comments or questions, I'm happy to answer them.
B?
I will move on to turning it back over to Ben for an overview of Appendix B.
So Appendix B is the, includes the Street Design Guide, which is in Table B1, includes roadway cross-sections and street hierarchy classification references. The Morseville Roadway Inventory, which is Table B2, includes roadway cross-sections and street hierarchy classification references for each road in Morseville. Appendix B also includes standard and alternative dimensions for each cross-section. Changes from 2009, the, this appendix is, and the cross-sections were really updated and generalized for all the roads in town, and the new cross-sections match NCDOT Complete Streets cross-sections. We also added alternative dimensions for each cross-section, and as a reference, this was in Appendix E in the 2009 plan.
We want additional follow-up item, and I believe it was Councilmember Johnson that had this question, is really to discuss whether or not the required standard two-lane cross-section should be modified townwide from 2A to 2E. My only observation associated with that is 2A does not have a median, generally speaking, whereas 2E does have a median, and where medians would not be appropriate throughout all of our neighborhoods. So that's just kind of staff's general feedback on it, but I'm happy to discuss any recommended changes.
I guess the only reason I brought it up, and I do get it, you know, we don't need medians to roll neighborhoods, so we need to have a two-lane cross-section to go through neighborhoods. I guess I, I always prefer on those roads, like Town Hall Drive, and now with the Morseville Carpenter Road project, that we'll have a median, it's just a safer, a safer option to have some kind of landscape median.
If you look at Table B1, which is our Street Design Guide, it really gives kind of a primary cross-section and a secondary cross-section. And according to this, so local streets would be the 2A, and that really is all of our residential streets that we see in the new neighborhoods. The next portion that comes into play is 2B, and this is where there's a couple of different options, and we didn't necessarily say that they all have to be 2B, 2C, 2D, or 2E for collectors. And you want that flexibility typically, because some of the right-of-way just is existing, and it simply won't accommodate the additional median. However, when we start building newer roads, it's where we can look and see what cross-section is most appropriate, but again, completely open to discussion of any modifications for any other roads that are identified in Table B2, which is our roadway inventory. If there's any specific recommendations to some of those cross-sections, we can talk about those specifically if you'd like.
Councilmember Shlink, please.
Anything about roundabouts, the one we have at Town Hall Drive? I mean, to me, I think they might be a nice feature to put at the other end of a roundabout at Church Street and Jeremiah Street, for instance.
So you're asking specifically if we should add a standardized cross-section for roundabouts?
Yeah, is that something we do? I don't know.
Typically, they're designed based off the existing geometry of the road, streams and things, but, you know, if there's a preferred design, such as you do want to see landscaped interiors, or they could all be hard surface, maybe those are some of the recommendations that we can incorporate into here.
Again, I don't know if we're going to use it again, that's all, but, again, the big picture is this is for a developer to go to it and say, this is what I can count on the town's going to require, and helps with their estimate on their project and everything else.
That is correct.
Councilmember Wendell, and Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with what Councilmember Shlink said. If there was a, you know, if we were going to have some type of a monument or something, just so that, something so it's not just a blank circle that has like a cap on it, if we, you know, if there was something that we could do standard, again, looking, you know, down the road, a number of years, you never know when we get into redevelopment, that we may need to have, you know, additional roundabouts. If there was some, you know, we require some type of feature in the middle of it just to make it have a little bit better street appeal, if you will.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Is there some kind of a standard cross-section for schools, like, we can set a standard for it, because Parkside is going to have a new school, and then we know that the other school is obviously not in Morseville jurisdiction, but RTP. Marshall Elementary and Cedar Fork, you know, those cross-sections. Can we have, the reason I say that, if we can, some kind of a verpage about the safety standards that's maintained around it?
I don't think it's much the cross-section, because if they put a road on a, put a school on a local road, or put a school on a major thoroughfare, completely different classifications of roads and completely different cross-sections. I think what, in my experience, when I drive by our schools, it's, there's not enough stacking internal to the site for the carpool lanes. That seems to create a problem. I also think the philosophy of how parents enter and exit, whether or not, you know, they can take a left in, whether or not it creates almost a circular pattern, you know. So for example, you know, both of our elementary schools, I can take a left into, or I can take a right into the carpool lane. That seems to create more confusion sometimes as well. So we can develop standards, or develop a recommendation in here to then develop standards that will direct how that flow has to occur, and we can also increase our stacking standards for schools, so that hopefully we don't really have a lot of that overflow. I mean, that's a possibility, that we can create some regulations that help to drive that. Then ultimately, what also comes into play is the school itself, and they may add additional rules or regulations into that, but we can definitely evaluate talking, adding a recommendations related to that, that then can implement into the UDO.
Yeah, that's exactly what MTSA, you know, that they have standards for any schools. That's what I was trying, the safeties are set up, and it doesn't, most of the schools, the sites are such that it has to come on an existing thoroughfare or collector road, and anything that we can do would be better than saying we don't have a policy around it.
Councilman Garamella, if I can also just follow up on that. So we do generally follow, NCDOT has a whole division or group that looks at schools, and they actually have a, they've developed a methodology for figuring out how much stacking space is required, and the schools have all followed that. And I think for, when Cedar Fork, when they were adding a modular unit, they actually increased their stacking space pursuant to that methodology, and it appears to be working. And so we do, we've worked, we've been very lucky in being able to work with the school system to make sure they follow that methodology, and that may be an easy thing that we can add into the plan, just recommendation to strengthen that tie-in in our UDO back to the NCDOT methodology.
No, no, exactly. That's the MTSA calendar, right? That's what they use for the stacking of the lanes. I have done several modulations on it, but from what they say, even though if you have MTSA calculator you're using, DOT clearly says Western Wake has 30% more than the MTSA recommendation, and that's because this part of the area has a lot of kids going into, you know, taking carpool lanes. So those are the kind of things, because MTSA doesn't say that, you know, but DOT understands it, and they program it. And might be if we need more, we can set a higher standard, but at least that's where I was planning to go.
So is that something that we can do? We can require higher than NCDOT?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have head nods that we'd like to sort of add that as a recommendation to look into that, to see if there's a possibility of making sure that it meets our needs, especially in Western Wake County, because I think that we do carpool more than some. And just to circle back to the roundabouts as well, I also would support something that sort of makes them a little more aesthetically pleasing, rather than just generic, that Councilmember Wendell was mentioning, just a flat plate on top is not as attractive. So if that's something that the council would like to sort of see, that if roundabouts come in the future, we'd like them to be aesthetically pleasing? I'm seeing some head nods. Okay. I think we're good on that. And did Mayor Protem want to add anything on this area, schools, pedestrians, anything of that nature?
I have a few comments. Thank you. The first thing is that for pedestrian crosswalks, we currently have a signal system that is no longer supported by the federal highway system, and I don't know if there is a current recommendation about what we can use in the future, if something breaks or is needed to be newly installed. I think there might be some considerations for kind of referencing, you know, the pedestrian crosswalk signals that we might want to use as an option, maybe not totally covered in, but it'd be helpful to know what our dangers are. And this could also apply to the schools though, that we have, and if a meeting is during the, you know, a referendum.
Ben is going, yeah, I'm going to have Ben respond to, I apologize, Mayor Protem. Can you repeat your last statement?
I mean, I, I, I always just very much, you know.
My apologies, I just overspoke top of you, but Ben is going to answer part of your question, and then I'll follow up after that.
A couple things. The, actually, the Federal Highway Administration has now re-approved the rapid rectangular flashing beacons that Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson is mentioning. So we do, there is another interim approval. We can use them now. We can replace parts, we can add to, add more, where that is, that issue has been addressed by the federal government. And I just did also want to mention that in, I believe it's in Chapter 5, in the Policy Recommendations table that you'll be getting at the break to review for the next meeting, there is at least one, if not a couple, of policy recommendations in that table for looking at additional pedestrian crosswalk safety enhancements. So that, that topic and discussion may be better held to the next meeting when we get into that Chapter 5 discussion, and whether we need to beef up that particular policy recommendation or add another one to it.
Oh, that's, that's, I just, you know, that is, that is, that is my mind so far, making sure the street is, you know, both the rest, you, depending on the different signals that we have to use in practice now, so. But we can just get that further in Chapter 5, you know, or, you know, second line.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, so just to summarize, before we move on, is, we will, we have guidance that we will add a policy statement that we develop some type of standardization for roundabouts, and we will also add a policy statement that we will look at amending our regulations in order to address really stacking and movements in and out of schools. And then, we will go back really through, I know we had previously taken out sections of these rapid rectangular beacons. We'll make sure that we can now integrate that appropriately. That's more of an observation on my end, but we'll add that appropriately throughout the document in any place. And then we're also going to park it and bring it back as well on, as part of Chapter 5, as part of the overall sidewalk conversation, or crosswalk conversation. So those are the items I have on Appendix B at this point. Does anybody else have anything to add before I move on to the next appendix?
So can I ask just a, we're going to talk about this later, you know, with the improvements to the intersection at Davis Drive and McCrimmon. That doesn't fit into any of these scenarios, so.
Certainly.
How do we handle that?
So the cross-section itself, as with regards to the travel lanes, is very similar. It's when it gets to the turning movements at the specific intersections, those are going to vary per intersection. I think this falls into where we're going to have to decide philosophically somewhere in here, do we take the approach of trying to mitigate it as best as possible, or balancing the impact of that mitigation with aesthetics and the impacts of property? There's a balancing act, and I think philosophically that we may need to talk about potentially, and I don't think there is a policy probably in here now on the position, basically establishing a position as a policy, and then we can work from that when we're working with DOT or other agencies on some of those initial designs. I don't believe there's a program or policy recommendation related to that. Is there?
There is, there's a policy recommendation about working with DOT on betterments, and I think there's, there is something about, there may, there's some discussion about just generally working with DOT on, on state, I mean, state-managed projects, but nothing in particular about, you know, any one particular project or one particular alternative. So I think, you know, that may be, that may be a better discussion to have at the next meeting after the council has received the presentation tonight from NCDOT and can have some more discussion.
Do you mind if we just park that to Chapter 5? Any other items before?
Councilmember Shlink, please.
And since we're talking about crosswalks, do, and if we're, the ones that we no longer, can we still use the ones that we currently have, which were put under the federal guidelines, or do we have to, and I know it's kind of off the plan, but is there something we need to do in the future? We can still use them?
We can use them, and then we can maintain them, and we can replace them.
The only other thing I'll mention, since we're talking about a crosswalk in schools, is if it might be appropriate to have... is if it might be appropriate to have a crosswalk done on E50 to the other side of Little Road to the greenway, because I think there'll be people who will use the school entrance and exit from Parkside Valley from the neighborhood to get to Parkside, Little Road, to use that greenway.
I thought that Planner Tanner had let us know in the past that a mid-block greenway crossing might not be ideal in that area.
Staff is not recommending a mid-block crossing, because we have, as part of this plan, and the guidance provided by the council, are asking that 147 directly exit into the Little Intersection. And I think it certainly can be revisited once the decision is made on 147, and once we can have a better idea of the understanding. But as a general rule, we haven't identified crosswalks in this plan. It definitely could be a policy discussion item to go back and evaluate adding it, once we have additional traffic information that can give us most informed decision-making ability.
Right, but I'm just saying people are going to use it whether we do anything or not. I'm just trying to make it safer for our citizens who will do it, that's all. That you can get, you can go from the front to the back, and that's the, would be the safest way to get a greenway. I mean, to get to the greenways, I believe, through there.
Yep, I agree, and it sounds like maybe when it's in place, we'll know. And is that something that we should try to be proactive and have in the plan now, talking about?
Well, not in the plan, but I'm just saying, talking with DOT about it now in the school. That's all I'm trying to ask. I'm not saying put it in the plan, I'm sorry, that wasn't what I was saying, but just to kind of, because people will use it, is all I'm saying.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Let me clarify.
Yeah, my recommendation, if the council is willing, is to add a policy that we can put in here, because again, this is going to be the guidance that we use as we go and seek funding and have conversations. So if the council will, if we can park this, bring it back at 5 as a potential policy item to add, and at that time, consider whether to add it as a policy or not. I think that would be the appropriate time, if Councilmember Schlink is amenable to me tabling it to Lynn. Thank you.
And if I could circle back about the policy language about working with NCDOT on projects on state managed roads, might it also be appropriate to include Campo as sort of someone we actively work with, because I think they are sort of part of that mix and can help advocate on our behalf when those happen. And I think it will be important to have a policy like that, because right now, we're just talking about this continuous flow intersection option at Davis, but we're also going to be talking about 54 and what that's going to look like. And in the past, we haven't been that happy with the super street concepts. So I think we have to, I realize that everything's going to be on a case-by-case basis, but we would like to have an overarching idea or policy in place to address things like that when they come up, because the traffic is going to be an issue for us for a while. Okay. Was there anything else on that appendix? Mayor Protam, did you have anything that you wanted to add at this time?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start now, kind of jumping through the appendices, trying to get through them in kind of an efficient manner, based off the amount of time that we have left. So I'm going to go ahead and move over to Appendix E as an elephant. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ben for him to cover what's included in Appendix E.
So Appendix E covers the scenario planning process that we went through with a few of our corridors as part of the plan, and it includes maps and report cards from McCrimmon Parkway, NC 54, and Town Hall Drive, which were the three chosen corridors in which we, we did some scenario planning, look at, looking at a couple of different development scenarios, and, and whether the recommendations for those corridors, or whether they, whether they do okay today, or whether the recommendations for them would work under different development scenarios. So that's what, that's Appendix E on that. There is no equivalent appendix from 2009 Plan. This was something new in this plan. And with that, turn it back over to Courtney.
And I'll just, the one other thing I wanted to add is the actual areas that were studied were based off of feedback provided at the council retreat in 2017. So that, at that retreat is where we received guidance in developing the scenarios that were prepared in Appendix E. The only follow-up question that we did have is Councilmember Schlink, I wanted to know if the Planning and Zoning Board discussed this, and the answer to that question is yes, they did discuss the scenarios prepared in Appendix E. I'll turn it back over to the mayor and the board if there's any questions.
Councilmember Schlink, please.
So it seems like these, we looked at how they could build out, it seems there'd be more appropriate use in the zoning, the updating the zoning we're going to look at.
Correct. It was a, this was an effort, since we were not at the point of being, of working on our land use plan update, this was an effort to, to think about some potential development scenarios for these specific corridors, to bring a little bit of land use planning into our transportation plan, really just to check and confirm that the improvements that are recommended, or that have already been made for these corridors, would satisfy future, a couple of different future development scenarios. And as you can see from the report cards, for the most part, they do. So that was really the purpose of that, and that's one of the reasons why it's a, really in an appendix, is it was just used to sort of double-check what we were, the direction we were already heading.
Just one follow-up question on that then, because I know things move fast, but like the Town Hall Drive, Alternative 1, tonight, we're going to discuss McCrim, or we're going to discuss the, I think alternatives, or maybe in this presentation, about alternatives to Mooresville Carpenter Aviation and 54, the grade separation? Right? So I'm just saying that, that, that kind of just, because some of those alternatives go right through this area of Town Hall Drive. I mean, right, you know, take a left and go and cross 54. So that takes away a lot of this planning that we're doing, I mean, as far as development, because you're going to eat that all up if you do a great railroad crossing across there.
And really, the intent was just more background information that we can use to feed the land use plan update. It was utilizing a resource that we had as part of this, that we can then feed into the land use plan. I mean, yes, any changes that are made to any intersection are going to have some sort of impact on another part of town. It is, it is unfortunately, or fortunately, depending what the outcome is, the way that it works. But we just wanted to really make sure that, you know, through these different scenarios, that we would understand what the potential impact on the transportation network could be if we developed under these scenarios.
Did anyone else have anything else they wanted to add about Appendix E? Anything doable in five minutes?
I'm going to actually move on to, trying to think, you're the best one to go to. I'll move over to, in Appendix E, I'm not sure we can finish it, but I'm going to go ahead and quickly move on to Appendix E. Excuse me, F.
F as in Frank, okay.
F as in Frank, yes.
All right. So Appendix F include, is a new appendix, and it includes design guidelines for construction of multi-use paths and amenities to create a townwide standard. We felt that since we were pulling greenways into this plan, and, and also creating the new terminology with side paths and multi-use paths, we felt it was, it was appropriate to develop some design guidelines. So this appendix is, was created by our consultants, and it's done in such a way that we could essentially take this appendix, once the plan is adopted, and convert it directly into design guidelines that would go into our Engineering Design Construction Manual. One thing we don't have real, we don't have a lot of detail on right now is design standards for multi-use paths, for side paths, for greenways. We have some very general standards. This gives detailed design and construction standards that the town can use. As I mentioned, it is a new appendix, so there is no equivalent from the 2009 Plan.
We have not received any particular feedback or comments from any of the work sessions related to this item. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Schlink, then Councilmember Wendell?
The Hatchet Creek Greenway, this, these are the same standards we're putting in here, or are they different?
That I do not know. The Crabtree Hatchet Creek Greenway was well underway by the time we got to, by the time we had our consultant work on these standards. I will say, our consultants did use what are considered best practices and national standards. So I would imagine that they're probably pretty close, if there's any difference at all.
Councilmember Wendell?
Ben, if you can go back to that slide. So just for my edification, if there was a, a level geography that would have an eight-foot path, and then it were to go down a hill, would, would it, is the recommendation that it would transition from an eight-foot path to an 11-foot path because of the grade?
No, not necessarily. This is a, this table is in that Appendix F. It's just showing our, essentially, we broke it up into our standard widths. We have an eight-foot width, a 10-foot width, 11 to 14, or a 15-foot or greater. But each width, so we have these standards which are really focused just on the width, and then, but also in that appendix, we do have standards about typical maximum slopes and, and transitions, stuff like that. So it's, but no, this table's not meant to say, you know, you're going from one to the other. It's just saying, you know, generally for eight-foot path, this is where we would see them, this is where we would see a 10-foot path.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, does anyone have any final thoughts before we adjourn this session? Mayor Protam? Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you for the 6:30 session. Right now, it is 6:14, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that carries 6-0. It is 6:14, we are adjourned. 2018. It is 5:30 PM, and we are here to-